If you could please, it's great to see all of you here tonight and joining us. If you could please stand for the invocation, I'll have Mayor Protam Lewis give us the invocation, please.
Father in heaven, we come to you this evening, first of all, giving you praise, honor, and glory for who you are. And we thank you for this time of gathering here tonight at our city hall. We thank you for all of our employees who work so diligently to run the city. We thank you for this council, and father, we ask that you would guide us and give us wisdom in conducting the business for this city. We give you praise, honor, and glory for all that you are, and we give you thanks for your son Jesus, who came and died for our sins. In your precious holy name, amen.
Amen. I call this meeting to order for April 2nd, 2025. Chief, if we can have the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, in the judicial, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Sanders?
Here.
Chavez?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Amabile?
Here. And consideration and approval as agenda as submitted. And with that, we'll go to our city manager. Gary?
Good evening.
Yeah, consideration of the agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Staff would like to pull items number eight and nine from the agenda for tonight. We don't have a date that we'll be bringing them back just yet, but we anticipate bringing those back in the future.
Hey, if we could have a motion for the, to approve the agenda submitted with removal of items eight and nine?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and second. As said, any questions or comments? Not hearing any? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Mariah? Mariah Martinez is, is one of our very good employees. We have a lot of good employees, but for, for the month of, let's see, March, she is considered our number one employee for the month of March. And we're really happy that she works for the city. And I know it's, it's a demanding job, and her whole family has to be in, on it with her when she, when she works so hard. And it's my honor, along with the city council, to present to her the significant of recognition for Mariah Martinez. She is the recreation coordinator for the Parks and Recreation Department in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedication to service to the city of Los Banos and for being named Employee of the Month for the March 2025. Congratulations. Okay, chief, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. I would like to invite seven of our brand new officers to come up forward, please, and join me up here. So coming up is Officer Rayshawn, I'm sorry, Officer Rayshawn Owens, Officer Rafael Gonzalez, Officer Max Pugh, Officer Joshua Tovar, Marco Alvarado, Benjamin Silva, and Christian Rocha. So these gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, just graduated from the Fresno Police Academy. And this week, they have started their training at the Los Banos Police Department. And so these gentlemen were selected. They are the cream of the crop. They rose to the top during an intense hiring process last year. We got to work with them last year at the police department. I promise you, they smile. There you go. We got to work with them at the police department before they attended the academy, which is six months. So during that time, a few of them are Marines, and so they understood this, but I told them, consider yourself deployed. Make sure your families understand that because you are going to live and breathe and eat the police academy for six months, and they did. And so they were up very early and coming home very late. And at graduation last week, one of the Fresno captains came to me. I think I told you guys this, but he told me that he didn't know what Los Banos was doing, but our seven were unbelievably outstanding. And it was very hard for Fresno PD not to try to take that. So, so, so it was very nice to hear that. I think that Los Banos is in good hands. And so this is the next generation of law enforcement officers that you will see in our community, and I'm very proud of them. And so I wanted to take the opportunity to invite them so the public, our council, our mayor could meet them. And this is, chief, you remind me, this, I think, is the highest number that we've ever graduated at once from a police academy. So I'm very proud of them. They all did very, very good, and here they are. And so, gentlemen, if you would like to say anything, you may do so from the end.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Christian Rocha, 30 years old. I'm one of the Marines that graduated with them, and I'm just happy to be here. Thank you for having me.
My name is Ben Silva. I'm 30 years old. I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity, and I hope to, I want to give the best I can to you guys, okay?
I'm Joshua Tovar, 23 years old. I've lived here all my life, and I just wanted to give back to the community that gave so much to me. Thank you to Los Banos Police Department for supporting us and helping us throughout the whole six months. It was a great experience.
My name is Rayshawn Owens, 31 years old. I'm one of the Marines that graduated from the academy, and I'm looking forward to serving our city.
Hi, everybody. I'm Marco Alvarado. I just want to say thank you so much for having us here. We really dearly appreciate you. I just want to let you guys know that we're going to give our best to serve you guys. And if you ever see us on the streets, conversation with us, ask us questions if you have any. We'll gladly help you out. Thank you so much, guys.
My name is Max Pugh. I'm 28 years old. I was born and raised here in Los Banos. Just want to thank that department for giving me this opportunity, sending me to the academy. You know, and my family as well. They were very supportive and gave me a lot of leeway so I could do what I needed to do in order to complete the academy. So thank you all again. I'm looking forward to this job.
Hello, my name is Rafael Gonzalez. First, I want to thank God. I want to thank him for putting us together. I want to thank chief, city, everybody who supported us, your prayers, your love, your support. It means a lot to us. Six months was not easy. The academy is very tough, and we were able to pull through, and we were able to come here, and we're proud to serve here in Los Banos.
Well, we're all very proud of all of you. Chief, we're proud of you too, and the whole police department. It's really all about our safety, if that's the most number one, most important thing in our community. And I know the council wants to shake all your hands, and, and, and Mayor Protam Deborah Lewis actually was at the ceremony, and you want to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'm so proud of these young men for stepping forward to want to serve the city of Los Banos. And I'm proud that they all graduated from the academy and that nobody washed out. They had a law enforcement code of ethics that they all had to repeat at the beginning. I'm telling you, even as a young person, I couldn't have memorized this. So it, it was awesome. This was class number seven, 176. And of, of all the cities, we had the second most graduates. Fresno had the first, of course, but seven graduates from Los Banos is incredible. I would like to mention that there were some award presentations, and there were two awards that one of our graduates received. Top Law Enforcement Skills Award, which went to Max, and he scored 99.3% on that, on that test. Top Academy Student Award, max tied with another candidate. I think he may have been from Fresno. I don't know. I can't remember. Madera, okay. 90, 93.47. So the other, the other candidate, the candidate that got the award scored 100. I mean, 90, 99%, that was really, really good. So again, I, I am so proud of these young men. And when you see them in their vehicles, just smile and wave at them and let them know that you care. Because they need to understand that the community supports them. We support them as a council, and we want the community to support them as well. Thank you.
Well, guys, like yesterday, when I saw you guys at the police department, welcome to Los Banos. Good job, and, you know, keep safe out there. And if you need anything from us and you see us, definitely stop us and ask us for questions or help or whatever you need. All righty? Thank you, guys.
Yeah, welcome. Stay safe. I'm glad you guys are all here. We need you and really appreciate it.
So we expect the, the four of us, our pictures on your police cars in the front dash there, so you can remember what we look like. Anyway, chief, you want to end it up?
Thank you all once again. We're very proud of you. And let's get back to work, and let's get out on the street, finish our training so we could serve this fine community. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
I think someone has a request to come up and give someone a new belt. Someone does jujitsu of the bunch. I'm not sure which one of you it is. But we'd like to take a second to give them a new jujitsu belt.
My name is Joey Garcia, one of the co-head instructors with Savage Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu. This is the head owner instructor, Scott Savage, and we'd like to just present a couple of promotions. If you want to say a couple of words, it looks like we have a bit of time.
First, I just want to thank you for having these guys come in, letting us come in to do a little. I didn't even think I was going to be able to speak at all. I'm Scott Savage. I was actually, I'm still alive today because of one of the responses from your police department. The sergeant, Ramon McDonald, was the first on the scene, one of the first on the scene, put a tourniquet on my arm to stop me from bleeding to death in the, in a serious incident last August. So just wanted to throw it out there. I appreciate all you guys do, every one of you, police. So thank you. With that being said, I also wanted to just do, say a few things about these gentlemen real, real quickly. I wanted to promote two of them. One of them is going to be earning their brown belt today. And one of them is going to be earning their third degree purple belt today. Great training. They're great to train with, and I'm super happy to see them as part of, part of the department. So I want to just say that, too. So pass it back to you.
I think the council wants to shake your hands. No, thank you.
Congratulations on your achievement.
Thank you very much.
So anyway, that's, that's the good stuff. We need more of those, those nights. Appreciate everybody come forward with that, and now we will move on to our public forum. Members of the public may address the city council on any item of public interest that's within the jurisdiction of our city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Limited to five minutes to speak. Anyone, please come forward. You're welcome to come speak to us.
Welcome. I'm here just to make a request. We have a meeting with the Public Works and the City Engineer's Office. It's going to be the installation of a 36-inch sewer line through my property over on Place Road towards the sewer plant. So no one from the city staff has contacted me regarding this project directly until yesterday on a phone call and today this afternoon in a field. As I mentioned, it was mentioned by my, to my team from the city a year ago that the project may be moving forward. No plans were provided at the meeting. There were, no, no meeting was scheduled by the city with the landowner. The landowner is myself and a trust. So the trust needs to get involved in this as well as myself. Earlier this year, my team asked for the project drawings after several communications with the city and design engineer. Request was forwarded to my team that the design engineer would not release the plans until indemnification transfer form was signed by my team. Upon receiving those files, my team noticed the following. The present 10-inch-wide sewer easement exists crossing my property is already, has a 24- and a 30-inch line in it. So currently, there is no easement for this future line that's going to be installed. No requests have been made for a wider easement to accommodate the new sewer trunk line to my property, through my property, since the new trunk line alignment does not lie within existing easement. No temporary construction easement request has been made for the construction of the sewer line over my property. Not only an easement for the line will be needed, but a construction, temporary construction easement will be needed for equipment and the dispersal of pipe and materials. This is a substantial project going through my property. We also have a farming operation going on there, not as large as it was, but we have farmed it every year. And this year, we plan to have corn, tomatoes, et cetera. We need to resolve how we're going to farm around this sewer line construction. My design team noticed that the conflict with the proposed alignment of the sewer trunk line in my street alignment for North Point subdivision submitted to the city in 2015, which was required by the city for the application of a tentative map. City has had that for a number of years. This line currently designed to go over top of a water line that is designed to go in the street. But there's a sizable conflict there. Cannot build that way. It's against the law. A meeting would have been very well complimented this project had it been done six months or a year ago. City also need to provide insurance as well as the contractor and indemnification to the owners, as well as a notice of the project schedule. The previous city manager, as I know it, instructed the staff not to allow me to bid the project. At this point, I call that hearsay, but I'm going to look into that. Not that I want the job. I'm not requesting tonight to do the job. I have no interest in doing the job. This is like the Shaughnessy Park. That the city didn't take title to the park when the final map was recorded because that's what they said they didn't want. Five years later, because we have a new council and city manager, and I want to thank the council and the staff and the city manager that had, had been resolving that. And that got closed out last week. After five years, I paid the taxes and maintained it. And even after a year, until this council got elected, the council and staff, whoever they might be, did not make efforts to resolve the Shaughnessy Park that their homeowners paid for over five years ago. But they had a really good idea to blame it on host settler, rent host settler, that developer. That's all they did. The same thing with the Deanda Boulevard. I have contacted neighboring owners to take care of that situation. I hope to get that completed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate your, your working with us on the park. Come forward, please state your name for the record. Anyone? Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. My name is Heidel Perez, and I was just here on behalf of food vendors. And the new law, we can't have tables or chairs or canopies. And I just wanted to see if we could get anything to resolve that or what we could do to be in guidelines to have it, you know? Just because a lot of our people that go eat, well, they want to sit down. They bring families. A lot of the police officers go eat at our taco trucks, you know? I've been around for a couple of years. I'm going on seven. And I just, that's all I want, you know? I feel like it's unfair, you know, the homeless get canopies, they get, and then us that pay taxes. Well, you know, we're getting that taken away from us. Pretty much, I just wanted to put that on behalf of all food vendors. That's pretty much it for me, you know? Thank you, guys, and I hope we can get that fixed.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward. You're welcome to come forward. You're welcome.
Hello, honorable mayor and council. My name is Erica Howdes, and I am the president of the Los Banos Friends of the Library. And I just wanted to introduce myself and give a little bit of what we do at the Friends of the Los Banos Library. We are a, Friends of the Library is a volunteer 501(c)(3) not-for-profit community organization dedicated and committed to provide support to the Los Banos Library. So we were, I was able to apply that to our cats. Now that, I know that you're doing a review of the funding, and just in the future, I know that we have, you know, just so you can know, the animal shelter has over 18,700 followers in, underneath their belt, 18K. And, and what we would like, we were talking even, not all of us, but some of us were talking about an hour ago. And what we'd like, because you guys are very supportive, I know, Mayor, you've, you know, we've been keeping up with the shelter, is there was someone that made a suggestion and asked me to speak about it, and I think it's a good idea, that maybe as you progress with another staff member or something like that, because I know that the animal shelters, the personnel's awfully busy. They're, they're fabulous. But maybe we could have a type of hotline for animals, for individuals in our community that see something and they want to say something, that there's a telephone line that they could call in case there's someone that's abusing the animal or breaking a certain law of the animal. We know that our police department is awfully busy. But, but if there is at least someone saying something, we might prevent a lot of different negative things from happening. Other than that, again, the shelter individuals, they, it's, we have so many pregnant cats right now that are going in and out. They work diligently, diligently with making sure that these animals get adopted out, that they train them, that they actually go out and they find fosters from the different area. Just for your information, we do have over 11 501(c)(3) rescues within our footprint here on the lowlands or over the hill here. And they are tapping every one of those. We also can, there are two states that are requesting animals, and they are, they're left of Texas. I want to say New Mexico, and the one above that, Wyoming? No, not Wyoming.
Colorado?
Yeah, Colorado. That's it. Yeah, so, you know, I've got a good van. We could pack them up and we could take them over to where they're needed. But, so I did just want to, again, ask if there's any possible way that you can still keep looking at funding for the shelter and for needed items. The police department's always buying things and always driving through. But, you know, with getting a hotline, working with getting dogs out, having the community come together, we have had lots of money that has been donated to the shelter for a good cause. Even people giving $30, people giving $100. So we'd like to encourage the city to go ahead and do that with some funding that they could possibly find, which might be dog licensing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please come forward. Okay, I do not see or hear anyone coming forward, so go ahead and, and before we close the public forum, we've, over the last few months that, since the election, we've had sort of a confusion with people. If a letter was submitted to the city council after 3 o'clock, then it was read during the public forum. If it was submitted before 3:00 p.m., the day of the city council meeting, it was posted on the, the website. So I can understand where the residents don't realize which ones get posted. It's, you know, keeping time, track of the time. So we've decided that all letters that are submitted, emailed to the city clerk before the city council meeting, no matter what time it happens, will be read during the public forum. So there was a, a letter from last meeting that was not read, and we decided we're going to go back and, and read that one that was missed. It wasn't missed. It was actually posted on the website, but we want to read it. And so moving forward, we'll just, if there's a letter submitted, we will read it during the public forum. So before we go forward, Lucy, is there any new letters that came in today?
I received nothing.
So it's just that one letter? If you would like to read that into the record, please.
Good evening, Council. I am not able to attend in person this evening. I have a question I would like to get some follow-up on, although it is not an item on tonight's agenda. I attended a town hall-style meeting at the Rancho Las Vanas Mobile Home Park on March 1st, hosted by Adam Conover, project manager for the One Tree Tiny Homes Village. I was invited to attend by the onsite manager of the mobile home park, Ms. Chandra Lewis. During the presentation, Mayor Amabile had informed the group in attendance that he had arranged or in process of arranging for 60 unhoused people currently residing at the G Street encampment to be reestablished in Sacramento at a shelter-type facility there. My question is, did that, or will that take place in the near future? Since Las Vanas currently does not have adequate sheltering as displayed at the current encampment situation, this would benefit those being relocated as well as easing the burden on the G Street site. Thank you for the time. The city clerk has my contact information for the follow-up. Signed, Julie Creighton, resident of Las Vanas.
Okay, that's the only letter we have. I will answer that when it comes to my comments at the end of this meeting. And so now we'll close the public forum and move to consideration approval of the consent agenda. And Lucy, if you can go ahead and read what's on the consent agenda, please.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 250582 through 250817 in the amount of $1,661,441.51. City Council Resolution Number 6907, accepting public improvements for Quall Meadows, the village's 5 Phase 2 Unit 2 for Lodi Development, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6908, accepting public improvements for Dove Hollow, the village's 7 Phase 3 for Lodi Development, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6909, ratifying the city manager's approval of the employment agreement with the finance director, Minerva Moreno. City Council Resolution Number 6910, approving a side letter agreement memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Las Vanas and the Las Vanas Police Dispatchers Community Services Officers Association regarding COLA salary increase for public safety dispatchers. City Council Resolution Number 6911, amending Division 4 salary schedule, employee classifications relating to changes to Section G Police for the public safety dispatchers. Any items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, thank you, Lucy. Is there any items that any of the city council would like to discuss before we move to approve?
Yes, Mayor.
Mayor Pretend.
Thank you. Just quickly, it would be item 7, 7B and 7C. The question would be the same. I noticed in the opinion of proposal, probable cost, there is under miscellaneous H, under both of those products, a expenditure for speed humps. So I just want to know on the record, is that something where our staff is working with the developer? Where there may be a troubled street where speed humps are going to be needed? Or is this going to be diverse throughout the community? Because it, it looks like the cost that's being allocated is enough just for one street. So I don't know who's going to answer that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, the speed humps that are identified have been identified on specific streets, straightaways to try to reduce speed. So they've already been identified where, where they go.
Okay, all right. That was my question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Chuck is our Public Works Director and our City Engineer. And now I'll request the motion for approval of the consent agenda.
You'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
Okay, we have motion and second. As stated, any further questions or comments by the council? Not hearing any, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item 8 and 9 have been removed off the agenda, so we will move on to item 10. Actually, Lucy, why don't you read what 8 and 9 was, so we can just show what we removed from the agenda?
Item 8 on the agenda is consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number 6912, authorizing award of construction contract to Roth Construction, Inc. in the amount of $4,432,440 with a 15% contingency of $664,866 for the construction of the final kilometer sewer trunk line replacement project. And item 9 is consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number 6913, authorizing the interim city manager to execute a purchase order with Agui Construction Corporation in the amount of $175,269 for the procurement of reinforced concrete pipe pursuant to Section 3-10.250m of the City Municipal Code. And those two items were removed with the approval of the agenda.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to, and those two items will be brought forward, like our interim city manager said, in a future meeting. Item 10 is mid-year 2024-25 fiscal year budget review. With this, we'll go with our finance consultant, Mr. Kim.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. We're here tonight to discuss where, where the city is at mid-year and propose, request for proposal of certain amendments that are on Exhibit A of your staff report. First, this, this meeting allows the city council to take an in-depth kind of look at the city's financial picture as it pertains to the mid-year. The primary focus is on explaining some of the economic assumptions relating to the financial position of the general fund, being that the discretionary fund of the council. The mid-year budget review is going through and identifying and explaining the reason for amendments that are needed for general fund, special revenue funds, capital projects funds, the enterprise funds and the internal service funds. So basically, the fund structure throughout the city. And those, as I stated earlier, are identified in Exhibit A of the staff report. So the overview of the revenues for the general fund are put out as sales tax, property tax, the property in lieu of VLF, there's charges for services, licenses and permits, interest. And other is kind of a collection of all of the remaining items that kind of make up fines and forfeitures, grants, subventions, other things that aren't, that are kind of lumped together and would have made, you know, this discussion rather arduous. But I'd like to point out where, where we are, how, first, how we project these revenues is, is, the finance department really looks at remittances that have come in, especially considering property taxes that come in only three times a year. Sales taxes are an annual, sorry, a monthly remittance that is done with an advance and a cleanup on a quarterly basis. So, so we look and we match the projections from, from year to year. So we actually look at the remittances to see if there's any growth or, or not, and project those going forward. Property tax in lieu of VLF comes in twice a year and is predicated on a statute that happened a while ago. Charges for services are, are things that we have relating to services provided to the community. Interest is, is, for LEAF is a quarterly interest, and for our other investments, we receive interest on a monthly basis. So as you can see on this slide, sales tax, we're projecting to be slightly lower than budgeted. And we've confirmed this with, with a third party in terms of where they, they see, and we get the economic data for all of the, the different various entities within the city. And that's what it's kind of showing that countywide. Actually, Los Panos is, is a little bit better than some of the other jurisdictions within the county. Property taxes kind of grow at a 2% per Prop 13, but we, we've, we've had some new building and, and that potentially could grow based upon transfer of, you know, land, from land to land improvement to homes. VLF is showing a little bit stronger than, than we've proposed. Our charges for services, again, now this one is a little bit harder to, to forecast because some of it is seasonal, especially on the recreation side. License and permits is pretty much what, what we have anticipated and we budgeted for. Interest is one of the areas where we continue to show strength. Interest rates continue to still be high based upon, you know, our investments. And as, as you'll see in a couple panels in the future, our cash position has grown and is still rather strong. However, what we are showing is, is the total fund revenue projections. It's about missing our, our budgeted amounts by roughly just slightly less than $150,000, $138,000. So moving over to the projected expenditures of, of the general fund. And again, the economic forecasting of this takes into account one-time items and then fixed expenses such as payroll and, and other items that are easily identifiable and, and the structure is, is in place and, and there's not a whole lot of variability in those numbers. And this is showing this by department, so it's not identifying it based upon the, the kind of expenditure. So it's just basically saying by department where we are from a budgetary standpoint. As you can see, pretty much across the board, we're showing some, some savings on the expense side. that potentially could grow based upon transfer of, you know, land from land to land improvement to homes. VLF is showing a little bit stronger than we proposed. Our charges for services, again, now this one is a little bit harder to forecast because some of it is seasonal, especially on the recreation side. License and permits is pretty much what we have anticipated and we budgeted for. Interest is one of the areas where we continue to show strength. Interest rates continue to still be high based upon, you know, our investments. And as you'll see in a couple panels in the future, our cash position has grown and is still rather strong. However, what we are showing is the total fund revenue projections. It's about missing our budgeted amounts by roughly just slightly less than 150,000, 138,000. So moving over to the projected expenditures of the general fund, and again, the economic forecasting of this takes into account one-time items and then fixed expenses such as payroll and other items that are easily identifiable and the structure is in place and there's not a whole lot of variability in those numbers. And this is showing this by department, so it's not identifying it based upon the kind of expenditure. So it's just basically saying by department where we are from a budgetary standpoint. As you can see, pretty much across the board, we're showing some savings on the expense side. Some of this comes from some salary savings that we had, some of it comes from projects that haven't been completed and could potentially be rolled forward. But we're anticipating that our fund expenditures are going to be projected approximately about $2 million less than what we budgeted. And some of this is as we look through and did a deeper dive on where we had budgeted salaries and benefits and then the MOUs that came into play and a contingency that was put into place for that purpose. We are noting that we didn't need as much of that contingency as we originally thought. So this panel really projects out what our surplus is going to look like. And so based upon our projected revenues and the proposed increases that are identified in Exhibit A, we anticipate the projected revenues after amendments to be close to $27 million, 26.9 million. And as I just stated, the projected expenditures of $23 million and with the proposed increase of expenditures and transfers in Exhibit A of 833, we're projecting the expenditures after amendments to be almost $24 million, 23, 875, which projects our general fund operating surplus to be roughly about $3 million. So that's basically identifying where we are economically and this specifically just for the general fund. This is a quick snapshot of the cash position as it was presented in the last mid-year to this mid-year. As you can see in general fund and Measure H, we've increased in cash investments of roughly 2.3 million. Citywide, our cash investments have increased almost 14.2 million. Primarily, the big chunk of this increase was a IRF grant that we received $11 million. And that, those are reported in special revenue and for the purpose of the housing project for the homeless. So this, within the staff report, one of the major things that came up through this mid-year review was overtime, partly with police and for fire. As of this month, just recently, we'd had 622,000 roughly in expenditures for overtime across all, the whole landscape of the police department. That would include Measure H, Measure P, CFD, and general fund. To paint a little bit of the picture, in the original budget that was brought to council back in June, there was a reduction of about $312,000 from the previous year. The thought of this was that there would be some efficiencies with staffing levels the way they were. But what really came out from this was that with seven candidates graduating from the academy and we lost three officers outside agencies, it really put pressure on scheduling. And so, working with the PD department, we figured out what the minimum amounts of increased appropriations would be needed to basically keep a level of service for the police department at what was required through MOUs and just general safety. And within this, we found that we were going to increase the police in the general fund by about 220,000, code enforcement in the general fund about 3,000, Measure H, 4,000, and in the CFD for police, 20,000. So in total, roughly about 300,000, which would pretty much bring us close to what the previous year's budget was. So the fire was another one. And a lot of the fire has to do with increased OT relating to strike team deployment and duty officer coverage. As of today, we've received almost $300,000 of OES deployment reimbursement. So that really reduces the net impact of the overtime. Overtime expenditures as of today, well, not today, but when I did this report, was 405,000 roughly. So again, we worked with the fire department to figure out what the scheduling needs were and complying with MOU and just general safety. We decided that we would ask for an increase in appropriation to the general fund of 100, Measure H 20, Measure P Fire, 125. This is due to a lot of the personnel being staffed out of Measure P, more so than PD, and then the CFD Fire. So those were really some of the main increases in the overall general fund appropriations outside of just the kind of the normal scope of looking at our estimates from the year and actually getting better economic data for actuals relating to certain items like insurance and other items. So that is basically that for overtime. And the overtime is included in Exhibit A. So I wanted to go over the fund impacts of the proposed budget amendments in Exhibit A. The first would be the increase in revenues to the general fund. These increase in revenues are really just transfers of cash that have been reported in other funds. One was that we're closing out the PD Capital Projects Fund. And the PD Capital Projects Fund is going to have approximately a million dollars of cash left over from that project, which we're requesting that be allowed to be repurposed back into the general fund. About 500, there's a little over $550,000 of ARPA interest, and the ARPA interest is not subject to the Department of Treasury requirements. It's basically unrestricted money, so we're requesting that that get repurposed back into the general fund. The general fund has, through Exhibit A, increased appropriations for insurance, facilities, maintenance, the overtime we talked about. And then there is the salary realignment, the salary realignment was basically, we looked at how the budget was constructed at the beginning of the year, and we started looking at issues that we were having in terms of what the variances were coming from our GL and realized that they didn't make sense. So we kind of did a deep dive into all of the payroll, salaries and benefits charges to all departments, all funds. And we realized that in some cases during the implementation, some of the payroll numbers got coded to certain departments and so forth. So we went through a complete realignment to bring all of the departments and all of the charges back to where the FD should have been allocated. So the next was Measure H. And Measure H, there was some, again, increases for appropriations for insurance, but the main one there was the overtime. There was a salary realignment in there for a person that was charged, that we charged out. But the big one was facilities maintenance. So at the beginning of the budget year, the internal service fund was set up for facilities maintenance. And really what happened was we lost personnel out of there and the facilities maintenance internal service didn't really function as such. So Recreation was doing a lot of their maintenance through the account string that was not in facilities maintenance. So we were clawing back some of that money that was charged out from the general fund to facilities maintenance for the purpose of giving enough appropriations to, one, fix the maintenance problems and give a little bit more of the appropriations for the purpose of any additional maintenance that will happen through the fiscal year. There were some overages on one of the park projects on the budget, but that was, again, I think mostly an estimate that wasn't properly adjusted at the beginning of the fiscal year budget. So ARPA, ARPA is what I discussed in terms of that we're transferring out the interest to the general fund, but there was also a reclassification of monies there. So instead of just identifying and charging out to a line item that was identified in the budget, the approved budget, we realized that the obligations that were set forth that were required by ARPA needed to be, we needed to have those line items moved to improvements and taken out of landscape and irrigation, and also there was buildings and structures. So the items that are now, the narrative for ARPA is that the two remaining obligations for ARPA are the Ag complex and the pickleball court. Measure P Police, they really just had an increase in appropriations on the IT capital allocation. That was one of the things that we noticed that within the budget that was done at the beginning of the year, that the capital piece for IT was not, was not charged out to the internal service fund. So we remedied, or we're asking to remedy that tonight. The Measure P Fire, I mentioned that a majority of that is the overtime and they have some IT capital allocation as well. The Park Developer Impact Fee Fund, this is where we're decreasing the appropriations for the Ag Park because the Ag Park is going to be paid completely out of ARPA. The Assessment District, so we looked at, went through and looked at the charge and requirements that we'll be needing to operate all the assessment districts. So what happens is there's a lot of maintenance that is expensed out of the general fund and charged out to the assessment districts. Through this process, we noted that the amount of allocation needed in the charge outs was not enough to charge, to charge out the expenses that were for the purpose of the assessment districts. And with that, we're remedying that through this 133,000. And there was also a broken slide that happened in one of the assessment districts. CFD Police, again, this one was the overtime and the insurance. So insurance, we get an estimate at the beginning of the year from our insurer, from the RMA. And they typically, that estimate is either less or, well, it's never more, but it's usually less than what the actuals come in. So as we get closer to the quarterlies and we see what the actual expenditures are, we, for pretty much every year since I've been here, we have done something with increasing the actuals on insurance. Again, that is, that is something that is charged out through all departments, and you'll see that throughout the Exhibit A. CFD Fire, again, overtime and insurance. The Corporate Yard Impact Fee, so this one was the F Street paving. We're reallocating that out of, I think it was in the general fund, and we're reallocating that out to the Corporate Yard Fund, and this is a DIF fund. There's still some monies available for that purpose, and that's basically an entire reconstruction of the F Street yard tarmac. So as I stated earlier, the PD Station Capital Projects Fund, this is to close that fund out. It's no longer needed. We had a notice of completion and there'll be no more activity flowing through this fund. So in the enterprise funds, we have some, we're asking for some increased allocations for, again, IT capital, insurance, credit card fees that we're noting were budgeted at the beginning of the year, and those have increased. So we're asking for an allocation there. And then we're also asking for some additional relief on the PRA requests because that has been a considerable amount of activity, more so than we thought at the beginning of the year. Waste water, we're actually decreasing because of a maintenance worker that we pulled through the salary realignment that I spoke about earlier. Airport, increased allocation for the insurance allocation, and there's some building maintenance that needed to be done on site. Solid waste is very similar to the other enterprise funds where we have an increase in appropriations for IT, capital allocation, insurance, credit card fees, and PRA requests. So within the facilities maintenance internal service funds, we were decreasing the appropriations due to the activity, and we're charging those back to the funds for the purpose of that these won't be utilized in this year. So we're seeing that through about half of the year, the facilities maintenance internal service wasn't really operating as such. So the areas where the departments were doing their own maintenance, we decided to reduce the appropriations out of this fund and increase those appropriations in the facilities line items in those departments. And then fleet and IT are really the only last remaining internal service, and those were minor. We had some insurance allocations remaining on both of those. So that is a overview of what is detailed in Exhibit A. So the recommendation that we're seeking tonight is that the council adopt a resolution to amend the budget as it pertains to the revenue and expenditure line items that are identified in the Exhibit A of this mid-year staff report. Is there any questions?
Questions to staff? Mayor Perot?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have a question on Fund Number 501, 502, and 510 under elections.
Yes.
The election that's coming up in August, is that going to be budgeted in the '25, '26?
Yes, in the upcoming budget. Yes, correct. This was for the elections that happened.
Last?
Yes, that just happened.
So one thing I want to note before you ask another question, and sorry for interrupting you, is that in some of these cases, there's reclassification of line items. So we're not really asking for an increase in appropriations when this happens. It's literally, and so, and so the way the policy is, is that the city manager does have some leeway in terms of transferring appropriations between line items. We thought it would be more appropriate to bring all of those reclassifications that we identified up to this point to council.
And I appreciate that because I don't think we've done that in past years, other than these past two budget years that we had. That wasn't anything that the city council had approved prior to the two years that it was in the budget. The, under Fund 100, for special programs, the 22,000 and change to be rolled over unspent for the California Wellness Grant, could you explain that a little bit to me, what that is?
So the way we received the grant is, we received the grant upfront and we defer the revenue because the amount has to have some matching requirements to the grant itself. So as we increase any of the revenue or release some of the deferred income, and we say we're going to spend that, we then have to increase the appropriations because the appropriations wasn't there for the purpose of expending portions of that grant. So those amounts that were from previous year, that didn't get rolled over into this budget year. So the whole idea was, is that there's cash there, but the appropriation and the revenue wasn't identified in the budget that was produced at the beginning of the year.
I get, what I'm trying to find out is, what is the wellness fund? Is that something to do with our employees or?
I think it's a program that is... It's PD's, yes, right, it is. It's PD's, yes, right, it is. It is, it, that's what I thought. I was trying to, because there's, there's the, um, the UC Davis stuff, and then there's also, yes, so it's, it's a state-related. Yeah. And, and, and that got rolled, that didn't get rolled over into the year, so we, we wanted to make sure that we identified both the revenue on, on the one side and the expenditure on the other.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, uh, just to clarify things, thank you, Brent, very good job. Um, I'm glad I'm, I know why I didn't go into numbers now when I graduated college, but you do an excellent job. But anyway, this is our mid-year budget review, and we are making things whole that this council felt and staff felt were out of proportion where we should be. For example, we made whole our police and fire departments and raised their budgets up to where they should be. And we're looking at everything. We're looking at what's been done 10 years ago, five years ago, one year ago, and now, and this, this council's moving forward to doing what we think is right, along with the help of the public. Now, we are going to be looking at next year's budget. Next year's budget starts July 1, and we will have, uh, reviews of that coming up, uh, at a council meeting, and I guess we'll have one away from the council chambers. Also, that will be open to the public before we take action at a city council meeting. So this was a, I really like this, this review. I, compliments to staff, that's a lot of work right here. And, uh, I'm, I'm glad it's before us now, and we can make this whole, our, our departments whole again, and moving things where they belong. So with that, we, before us, we have City Council Resolution 6914. Motion, please.
I'll do it, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to, um, approve Resolution Number 6914 as read by title.
Yeah, motion and second for Resolution 6914 as stated. Any further questions or comments by the council? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have a motion carried. Again, thank you to staff. Next item, Item 11, consideration of appointment of a council member and an alternate to the Valleywide Special City Selection Committee associated with the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. So, uh, I think I, I want to turn this over to you, Mayor Protam, since you're involved in that, and you can tell the citizens what it's all about.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, the selection committee is a committee of, a majority of the cities that are in San Joaquin Valley, and that's from Bakersfield to the south, up to Stockton, uh, to the north. That includes all of San Joaquin Valley that the Air District covers. And from all the cities that, uh, are listed on the agenda, um, it's called the selection, uh, special, I'm sorry, it's called the, um...
Special City Selection.
Yeah, Special City Selection Committee. And what this, that committee does is, any city that needs to, uh, the cities will elect who they will have as their member and as their alternate. And once those people are selected, then they go to this particular committee of all the city members, uh, for confirmation. And then when there is a vacancy in a city for someone to be appointed to the board, and the board members are elected by every city within their county, so that means that, uh, for the County of Merced, when I was elected, the majority of the cities voted for me. So the confirmation, uh, the, the election goes to this committee for confirmation. It's sort of like, you know, the Senate and, in, in federal government for confirmation of people who are being appointed on special, uh, like your Attorney General and so forth. So we have a vacancy, um, in the City of Los Banos as a result of Mr. Jones no longer being on council. And as, as a result of that, uh, there is a going to be appointment of a lot of cities because there were people who did not retain their elections, or new people who were elected, and there needs to be new appointments. So in our city, uh, we have one vacancy, and that is for the alternate position. And, um, I would like to request that Evan Sanders be appointed in the alternate position, uh, for the selection committee by the City of Los Banos.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other nominations? Okay, not seeing or hearing any, then all in favor to appoint Evan Sanders for an alternate for the City Selection Committee for the Valleywide San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District?
Mr. Mayor, can I also ask that you reaffirm Deborah Lewis as the member?
Oh, okay. So then I'll go ahead and nominate you as the sitting member. And then, okay, and we have a motion for Evan as the alternate. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Actually, we don't need seconds on nominations.
I made the motion, I'm sorry.
We'll do, yeah. But it sounds good. May everybody in favor. So with that, before us, so we have, uh, so we'll take it separately. First of all, all in favor to, uh, continue, uh, Mayor Protam Lewis as our appointee for the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District member, all in favor of segment five by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. And the second one is to appoint Evan Sanders as the alternate to that same post. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you very much for your volunteering.
And Mayor, I'd like to add, uh, for Evan, uh, when we have these meetings, they feed us a fantastic meal after the meeting's over, so you won't have to worry about dinner that night.
That's a good idea. We should think about that, too. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you all very much. We'll move on to Item 12, Advertisement of Public Notices. There is, uh, no notices to report at this time, so we'll turn to our city manager's report, and our interim city manager, Gary Breezy. Gary, you have a report for us tonight.
I do, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Not to be outdone by these young police officers who just graduated from the police academy, I'd like our new finance director to step forward to the podium so that we can introduce I have a bio that I'm going to read because she has a long and remarkable career, and she's got, uh, she's going to be starting with us tomorrow at 8:00 AM. So Minnie, please stand by while I read this for everyone, and then I'll let you say a few words, and then when the meeting's over, we're going to have her go back with Ronnie and Gabe, and she's going to do a little, um, social media post for them in English and in Spanish to introduce her to the community. So thank you for being here, and, uh, pardon my, my time that I'm going to take here tonight. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're proud to and excited to introduce to you the City of Los Banos's newest, newest finance director, Minerva Minnie, we're going to go by Minnie, Moreno. She's a Central Valley native who calls Patterson home. Minnie has been married to her husband Antonio Moreno for 30 years. Together, they have two adult children, Yasmin and Carlos Antonio. Yasmin is a elementary school counselor at Grayson Elementary in Wesley, and Carlos Antonio is an assistant coach for the Las Positas College Men's and Women's Soccer Team, and he is currently pursuing his master's degree in sports administration. And I know we changed that, but apparently didn't make it on to the end. So it's coaching and...
Athletic.
Yes, athletics.
Administration.
There you go. Thank you, Minnie. Minnie holds a Bachelor's of Science degree in business administration with a concentration in accounting from the mighty California State University Stanislas. She has over 25 years of progressively responsible experience in customer service, administrative support, professional roles across various public and private sector employers. Minnie has developed extensive knowledge in accounting and finance principles and practices, particularly within city government context. Her proficiencies include professional and technical accounting, budgeting, and financial reporting functions. She has managed citywide operations, capital funds, utility and enterprise funds, and Melrose funds. Her career has included positions at Stockman and Fitzgerald and Johnson Certified Public Accountants, the City of Modesto, the City of Patterson as the Finance Director, the City of Stockton as the Municipal Utilities Finance Officer, and Del Porto, excuse me, Del Porto Water District as the Director of Finance and Administration. She is fluent in both English and Spanish, and we believe that will enable her to effectively manage cross-cultural communications and outreach. Minnie is skilled at rapidly acquiring new knowledge with an expertise in computer and financial software applications. And lastly, I believe that her interpersonal and communication skills and her work ethic will emphasize her delivery of outstanding customer service to the customers of this community, the residents of this community, who deserve that high level of customer service and strengthen her ability to be a leader. So ladies and gentlemen, without further ado, Minnie Moreno.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, residents of Los Banos. It is my honor to serve as your finance director. I am eager to collaborate with you to achieve the goals and vision outlined by this council for the residents of Los Banos, ensuring transparency and dedication in our efforts. I will always make myself available to offer clarification, explanations, and education of financial matters. I'm very excited to unretire and come and help the City of Los Banos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome aboard.
In other words, she's going to act as a translator for all the stuff that Brent says that we don't understand. Otherwise, Mr. Mayor, just a real quick shelter update. I know we talk about the animal shelter often. It is a work in progress. We have some delays with, um, our electricity vendor, PG&E. We're looking for some pieces of equipment that just haven't quite arrived yet, um, to power the building, the buildings, buildings in place. Uh, we've got office furniture in place. We're continuing to work on the exterior of the facility and improving the yards. We're actually going to create an additional yard space for animals, so there'll be three in total. We added, um, approximately a year ago, we added another row of external kennels for dogs, so we've increased the capacity for dogs. With this move to the new facility, we'll also increase our capacity for the care and treatment of cats as well. So we're looking forward to that opening. I hate to put a date so far out, but I'm going to say June because I would rather say a far-out date and then come in early as opposed to, um, saying something too soon and, um, not hitting that mark. But we're certainly trying. Um, there's a group effort between Public Works, the PD, and, uh, myself to get this thing accomplished and up and running because the community and the animal shelter and the men and women who work out there every day certainly deserve it. So we're excited to get that going. We're hoping to have Visa card payments out there as well. We don't necessarily want cash out there, but we're hoping to add the function and the functionality of Visa card payments out there. So we're looking forward to all of that. Uh, I'm going to say again, congratulations to the seven police officers, chief. A great addition to the team. I apologize for the last-minute addition to the, um, their ceremony up here where we gave them the belts, uh, for the jujitsu. Not only were they doing the schoolwork and driving back and forth from Fresno every day and taking the long, long, long hours to study and shine their boots and get their meals ready for the next day, make sure their uniforms are clean and ready, but some of them continued to be proficient in their martial arts trade and actually promoted to a higher belt, which is an incredible thing for me to see because I remember just being able to barely survive the police academy. Um, so, but it was much harder back then than it is now, so, um, I'm just saying, I'm just saying. Ribbon cuttings, we have a couple of those coming up, Pollo Loco this Friday, and then the Gateway Sign, you see that, that is continuing to work, and we hope to have that done in, in late April. We have a grand opening on April 25th. And last but not least, we talked about Shaughnessy Park. We've completed all of our transactions with the County of Merced. We turned it over to Joe Heim and his team, and no pressure, Joe, but we hear, we hear that you might see or hear some movement out there at the park later this month, maybe in a couple of weeks, but we're, we're counting on April for sure to have some movement out there to, to begin that process. And, uh, that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. So no pressure, Joe, but when's the exact time that's going to start? Okay, council member, uh, we'll go to council member reports. District One is vacant. That election will be August 26th. So everyone in District One, I hope you're getting ready to work your neighborhood and run for city council and have all this fun we're having up here. Join us up here. Uh, we'll go with District Two, Council Member Evan Sanders. Evan?
Congratulations, Chief Reyna, graduating from FBI Academy. It was a big deal, from what I understand. I was going to congratulate your officers, but they didn't hang out, but congratulations to you for having seven officers on the team. Uh, it's, it's awesome. Welcome to Minnie. I think that with, uh, with Brent's presentation, you see a city that's actually in pretty good financial shape, which I think is a little unusual. And thank you to Brent for the, the presentation. I, I really appreciate the transparency. I think it's what a lot of us are up here to try to make sure that we have, is the transparency in the city that Mayor may not have had recently. So, thank you for that. And thanks to Council Member Lewis for the nomination as alternate. That sounds fascinating.
Maybe you'll make a commercial.
Yeah.
At least you'll get fed over there, different than Los Banos.
You know, maybe we'll learn something.
Yeah.
Gary, the, the home camp looks a lot better than it did a few weeks ago. It's definitely, I noticed it, I drove by it on the way, on the way here, and, you know, it's obviously not an ideal situation, but it's a whole lot better than it was. So thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you for your report. District Three, Council Member Martha Chavez.
Uh, yeah, so first I want to start off with, bienvenidos, Minerva Moreno. Welcome, you know, glad to have you. So, uh, you know, be looking forward, don't get tired of my questions, but, uh, you know, be asking certain things because I won't know much, so I'll be looking forward to visiting with you. As well as wanting to congratulate, um, Chief Reyna, and, uh, you know, what you accomplished over at FBI Training, um, that's, that's, you know, that's something else that's not easy, as well as the seven cadets that we got through here. They look like fine young men, got to meet them yesterday, and, uh, you know, let's keep it going, and, and let's keep them here. So we're here to support them and, and you, as well as, uh, you know, Chief Tualla, they're in the fire department. You guys do a lot of great work as well. Um, you know, I was able to, to visit with some of the Public Works, uh, workers last week at a luncheon, it was a city luncheon, just kind of talking to some of them, and, and there's some nice individuals there. And I want to say thank you to some of those guys. I was talking to them about, hey, people are talking about potholes and, oh, where at? I was like, wow, we're over there before you get to the dairy on H Street, and lo and behold, man, right away, that thing was filled and some other places. So great job to, you know, all our staff. They jumped on, everybody wasn't, I was just saying, hey, you know, people were asking about this, that, like, you know, what, what do we do to get the roads fixed around here, you know, and, because I know that the roads are starting to fall apart, I know people are starting to ask a lot of questions. I know there's been a lot of people approaching me about Highway 152, but that's a Caltrans repair there, which is on the books. Was there almost two weeks ago at MCAG meeting, uh, in Merced, where Caltrans was there, and, uh, they do have it, uh, you know, there lined out to work. They did talk about being at one of our council meetings here coming up in April. They will be back at the MCAG meeting this month in April. They're going to have a presentation on the roundabouts. I know that's one concern you had. I had that concern as well, on the roundabouts, they're going to, they're saying it's not what, what we believe or what it is, because I talked about the one in Hollister, and that one doesn't function very well. And they said, no, 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 you, we have a presentation for you, you can see how that works. It's also going to help with, uh, trucks on Volta Road, the way they merge on and come off. It's a lot safer than pulling out and people just, you know, hitting the brakes and stuff like that, because we also got roundabouts that are proposed here on 165. So looking forward to their presentation to, to see what they're talking about. Cameron Health, was there at that ribbon cutting? Very nice facility, it's open to the public, so if you haven't checked it out, I encourage people to go check that out, um, as well. Thank you, uh, you know, Easy Breezy, for, uh, the encampment, very clean, baby, I, I like it. It's, it's, it's looking a lot better. I know we got a lot of work to do there, it's definitely, uh, you know, it's, that's, that's something that's still, we're still working on, and I think the mayor's going to visit on that here shortly and give a little bit of an update on that. And, uh, other than that, um, you know, trying to, trying to make sure we got good relations with our, you know, State Assembly people and Congress people, and hoping to get with Ismael De Soria, so make sure we've got good, uh, you know, good, good communication with her. She's been good to the city, would like to keep that relationship going well. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Yeah, with, uh, one of the things on the roundabout, I'll just say it since... Yeah, with, one of the things on the roundabout, I'll just say it since we don't get too far away from your comments. Our, our worry is, is like what Councilmember Chavez said, it's, it's the trucks. The cars can make it through if they're big enough. So there's supposed to also be a video online somewhere showing their new design for trucks. So we'll report on that after we have our meeting at CLB next week. So hopefully that is what they said it's going to be.
Well, that's what that presentation's supposed to be at that MCAG meeting supposedly, so we'll see. And I hope they bring that here to us as well, so we can take a look at that.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, I will say, Tanya did respond from District Ten, Caltrans, to some of the, the potholes and stuff like that. They did some cold patches, so it's good.
That's good. Glad you were there. Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor Protem, Deborah Lewis. Deborah?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have a few things here. First of all, Minnie, congratulations. I look forward to being able to finally talk to somebody, so I'm glad that you've opened that door for us, and I'll be meeting with you and asking the questions of things that are a bit foreign to me still. So congratulations and welcome aboard to the City of Los Banos. Chief, was the FBI Academy more difficult than the academy that you went through to be a police officer?
No.
No? Oh, well, there it is. But congratulations. I'm glad you were able to go and...
Everybody's part of the community.
Well, I guess that'll be a debate going on here, huh? And again, I just, I'm really proud of our seven young men who graduated from the academy and very proud of them. Public safety is near and dear to my heart, and I support all of our departments, but those, those first-line responders, we're all going to need them one day in our life. And I'm just glad that we're able to start making our departments whole and to correct the budgeting for them, for overtime, and the necessity finances that they need to keep functioning and running their departments. So thank you to the Finance Department for doing that. This is already over and done with, but on March the 29th, 27th, I think it was, it was a grand opening for another coffee shop in Los Banos called Rare Earth Coffee. Am I correct, Stacy? Okay. So that's on Pacheco Boulevard, and our coffee drinkers really don't have, you know, they have a array of coffee places that they can go to for their coffee fill. So congratulations to Rare Earth. And on March the 26th, we had our children, our youth, along with their parents, come to Olivera Park and paint our courts over there. It was a lot of fun. I had an opportunity to participate in this one. The first one for the tree planting, those kids got that done really quickly, and by the time I showed up, they were walking away and completing with, completing the job. So we had some of our resident community members out and our families out. The kids had a great time doing this. So thank you for providing that for the community. We did approve the $20 million at Valley Air at our last meeting for clean vehicle replacements for residents. It is an income verification program, and there are going to be several places within San Joaquin that will have signups for people who are interested in replacing their vehicles with a slightly used or new vehicle. But Merced County won't be coming up until sometime in May, and I'm very concerned that this money is going to be exhausted quickly. I don't know if or when we will be getting money again for vehicle replacements. So for those who might be interested, you can go to ValleyCAN, that's V-A-L-L-E-Y-C-A-N.org/CCCC, four Cs and another forward slash, and it will take you to the website for ValleyCAN for the vehicle replacement. Upcoming really soon here, close to Los Banos, on Tuesday, April the 8th, there'll be a site in Madera. Let me see, I think I have the address on that one. Yes, it will be located at Mountain Mike's Pizza at 1460 East Yosemite Avenue, and that's in Madera. And then there will be another one on Thursday, April the 10th, in Modesto. And that will be located, again, at Mountain Mike's Pizza at 901 North Carpenter Road. So again, anyone who's interested in replacing their vehicle, and especially people who are having difficulty passing smog, and you can get financial help to replace your vehicle. It is income verified. And again, go to that website, valleycan.org/CCCC, and the information will be there on where the locations are. You don't have to wait until it comes to Merced County. You can go to any of the sites within San Joaquin Valley to apply for a car replacement under this program. Okay, and we, there will be a ribbon cutting this Friday at 10:00 a.m. for El Pollo Loco, and that's in the Save Mart Shopping Center next to McDonald's. That shopping center is packed with a bunch of good eating places, so I'm sure they'll be having some goodies that they'll pass out to people there at El Pollo Locos. And on April the 12th, which is a Saturday, it will be our fourth annual egg hunt at Olivera Park. And I'd like to invite the public out. There will be egg hunts, crafts and games, bounce houses, and we, we have the children come in in age categories. And so the egg hunt schedule is from age three and under will start at 10:30 a.m. For ages four to six will start at 11:00 a.m. From ages seven to 10 will start at 11:30, and all ages will be at 12 o'clock. And there will be one parent that will be allowed to break the tape to be in there with their children. So it's a really fun event. I've attended all of the annuals that we've had since this started, and I want to invite the council to come out and enjoy this event with the city. It's a great event. A lot of kids and a lot of parents come to this event, and so it's, I'm looking forward to it. And that's my report for this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll go ahead and start, and Gary, I know you must have to say something about the chief passing the academy, the FBI academy. How many chiefs have now passed the academy? I got you on.
Yeah, Ray and I were talking about that the other day, and I believe it's four. It's he, myself, now Chief Headen in Turlock, and Loris Broderick, Chief Broderick. So four of us. I don't know what class Jason went to. I was 237. What session were you guys? 293? Yeah. Yeah, so as the, as the numbers go higher, the classes get easier. So I just...
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm sorry if I can interrupt. April 16th, we do plan on having Caltrans here before council to do a presentation on Highway 152, Highway 165, and, and the repaving project for Pacheco Boulevard. And to answer some of your questions as well. Again, Ray, congratulations on your graduation. It's awesome.
Well, that's good. I'm glad we got Caltrans confirmed. I hadn't heard they confirmed yet, so that's good. Okay, I have a few things here. So first of all, I'll start off with Julie Creighton's letter. I did, we attend a lot of things. There's actually, with unhoused population in town, we talk about it every meeting. It's, we have meetings, council has meetings on it between ourselves, between staff every week. Staff is working on it every day. We're trying, I, we also get calls from the residents. I had three calls this week. So it's on everybody's mind, and we are working on it. We actually are working with, I think, three different companies right now. We have our One Tree, which we're doing. We have, we work with La Familia, and we just met with, and that's what Julie Creighton was talking about, is Everwell, correct? So these are all promising things. We are, we're looking for funding, financing, how this is going to be worked, so it's not a burden to our city's finances. There, things are drying up through the state monies, so we're trying to act fast with that. We're so lucky that we have the big grant from last year for the One Tree housing, but we're looking at a lot of different things. And I, there's no date certain, but we're all working on it. I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that. It's, if we're not talking about it every second, we're thinking about it just about every second of the day here at this, at the city council level and staff level. Last week, we had our local agency formation commission meeting, my first, that's LAFCO, that's my first meeting with LAFCO. LAFCO is, is a land use, a commission that works with all the cities, water districts within the Merced County, and they okay basically changes of land uses. That, so with cities, the big thing is annexations, they have to prove it. Water districts, if they want to include more or less land into the district, they approve all that. Each, each entity pays for LAFCO. LAFCO is not funded from the county. If county does put in money to it, just like City of Los Banos does, but it's not a county organization. So it's an independent one. So there's a, we had a big informational thing on that last week, and there's more to come on that. A lot of it, we're talking about the budget. Budgets, everybody's talking about budgets now because July 1st is coming around the corner of our fiscal year. Also, last week had MCAG, a couple of weeks ago, whenever it was now. MCAG's budget's around 141 million for this upcoming year, and of course, they take care of solid waste, yachts, which is the, the transportation to Yosemite, the bus system. Of course, they get funding through federal, state, and their Measure V, that's for, mostly for roads. So we're working on that, and we've talked a little bit about that, so I won't go into that anymore between, but we're looking forward to what the answers Caltrans has for, for our community. Last Friday, we had our ribbon cutting for Peninsula Clean Energy, our solar, new solar system at the community center. Went really good. We had Sean Marshall, the Executive Director, CEO of Peninsula Clean Energy, she came down with her staff. It was a great day. They, I learned a lot, because we had another educational meeting last week also with them, that they talked to their whole board on how they get their monies and everything. A lot of money in these companies, they're, they have to stay $250 million liquid at all times, so they can buy power and then resell it back to, to the residents and the communities. I learned something that was very interesting and is, so you see all these solar projects all around the state being installed, and so now there's so many of them that California is so far behind on their infrastructure that between 11:00 and 2, 11:00 a.m. in the morning and 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon, when it's the ideal time to generate power with solar, the grid, California grid cannot accept any more power. And that, to me, is just crazy, you know? It's cart before the horse thing again. So that's why you're seeing everybody going into batteries, so they can store that power during that, the ultimate time, and then release it to the grid either at night or at a time the grid can take it. Uh, let's see. We've been in discussion with the school district to restart our two-by-threes, two council members, three school board members. Hopefully, we can find a date this month or next month that we can start up those meetings. We used to have, we started that way back when I was mayor the first time, and they were very, very well received by both agencies. It kept everybody informed what everybody was doing. You know, the school does not really have to come to the city for approval of plans. They go to the state directly. But so these meetings are very important, so we can give our ideas. Like, if you build a new school, you have to have a major artery street, at least two sides of the school. And just little things like that, which they accept, and they do, but we have to make sure that they're not experts on traffic. Our staff is, so we all have to be a part of that. So hopefully, we will start those up in the next month or so. Been looking at all our commissions. I, I started on, way, way back when, I started as a airport commissioner, and I was appointed by Elinor Austin, the mayor at that time. And our big claim to fame way back then was we started the key lock system for the airport, and you could then go up and put your credit card in and buy fuel. Before it was, it was, there was a person out there for so many hours a day that would fill up your, your plane with gas. So that commission, you know, it took a lot of work, but the council listened to us, and we got that approved and got in the budget, and it was put out there, and it's, it's been, you know, it's been updated many times since then, but it's still there in the same place where it was way 30 years ago when we put it in place. So I really want to look at all the commissions and make sure, planning commission definitely has a lot of work, and it's pretty much stated in law what they do and what they have to approve to come to the council. A lot of these other commissions aren't that, and they're just as important. And I want to make sure that they know that and that they're doing work that is critical to this city and to this council, so we can approve it. So we're looking at all that, and hopefully, we can improve that real soon in the future. And I think what we used to do, again, when I was mayor before, I hate to keep saying that, but we'd have, like, once a year, we'd have the commissions would have joint meetings. We'd have a joint meeting with the school district, joint meeting with all, each commission, and listen to them, and it might not have been the whole meeting, but we did those things. We actually also had our student, they would elect the mayor and city council member at the high school, and they would sit up here with us with one meeting, and that was a fun meeting. That was really a fun meeting. So hopefully, we can get, slowly get those things going again, get people involved. Right now, there are a few positions open, and they're open till Friday, so if you want to be in the know, and you want to know what's going on and help us out, we encourage you. Measure H is an oversight committee, commission that looks at one of the, the bonds we, we passed. There's one position available in Measure H, this is an oversight committee. Measure P, another bond. There is one vacancy there. Measure V is another bond. That's the, that's the transportation one for the whole countywide. I sat on that for a while. And just to let you know, everybody says, oh, you have to be on planning commission. From planning commission, you then move up to the city council, like Mayor Protem Lewis did. I was on airport commission, and I moved up to mayor. And so all these commissions teach you how, how this all works and get you involved. So Measure V is a very important one. That usually meets like once or twice a year. Then the, and the planning commission, there still is one vacancy on that, and the tree commission, there's three vacancies on tree commission. You need to have your applications in by this Friday if you're interested, and please, put them in. If it doesn't work out, you can always resign, no, it's no problem, but we want everybody to get involved. This is our community. We need your ideas. We need your, we need your brains working for us. Okay, so I think I have a few more things, but I'll save for our next meeting. That's enough talking for the night. But anyway, with that, I really appreciate it. We had a good meeting tonight. Appreciate the council, staff. We got our budget in order. That's good, and it's going to even get even better in the future. Welcome, Minnie, for, we're looking forward to working with you. Look forward to that. Slowly get all our positions, put people, bodies in these open positions. This is going to be good. So anyway, with that, I appreciate everybody. This meeting is adjourned. We are closed session. I wasn't going to, I guess I can't go home. Thank you all. I had so many notes on my page, I wrote over the closed session. Okay, we're going into closed session. Legal counsel anticipated litigation with exposure under government code section 54956.9B. It's one potential case. We will be going into closed session discussing this issue. If anything is decided, we'll be coming out here and taking a public vote or letting the public know what's going on. With that, we'll move to closed session. Thank you for being with us. We'll see you in a few minutes. Okay, under, we are back from closed session. It was conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation to the city under government code section 95, 954956.9. One potential case under that, city council gave advisement and direction to staff only. No decision will be made here in the chambers. Thank you for joining us. This meeting is adjourned.